Can we have everyone rise for the pledge and then remain standing for the landing acknowledgement statement? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, endless.
The Salamanta City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Anarjowaka, the people of the Great Hill, the South of people on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamanta Central District now stands, and whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples and we resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamanta City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students.
Thank you. Well, now just to know, do you have the superintendent via Zoom? He's an DC representative in the city. So that I need to know, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Good evening. We do have four additions or changes that have occurred since it was initially published last week. We revised the Prospect Elementary School presentation. We added travel for the boys' basketball team and our cheerleading team to go to the state finals. We removed Katie Snyder travel for the Safe and Civil Schools National Conference, and we added an executive session at the end of this meeting for the purpose of property acquisitions.
All right. Well, with that, I need a motion to approve the agenda. Second, motion by Christian, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor, opposed, abstained, motion carried. First, we have our presentation by Prospect Elementary.
Well, thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. We're excited to be here. We really, as we, we went back and forth so many times and trying to think about what we wanted to present to you all. We obviously have a limited amount of time. I'm sure everybody wants to get outside and enjoy the weather, but we really tried for tonight to really highlight our work around the three main areas of the board holes for tonight, though. All right, so we are going to be, we're going to focus tonight on, and just highlight, we really wanted to, we're really proud of the work. We really wanted to just showcase some things that we're doing around attendance, family engagement, and obviously academics. So we are going to. We checked. No? Okay. All right. So first, we wanted to highlight some things that we've been working on with attendance. As with everything, this work is always evolving. We're really trying to be very reflective practitioners and thinking about all aspects of what we do with our young learners and with our staff at Prospect Elementary. So some of the things that we really wanted to highlight is we have set up biweekly meetings this, this year with liaisons and our building-based counselor, and she is meeting individually with liaisons. And this ties to a few of these different aspects. We are pulling reports from Power School, looking at chronic absenteeism, and really start trying to focus on those kiddos and families that are at a certain percentage. So touching base with liaisons, working with the families, coming up with a plan together collaboratively and bringing the team together as well to think about all things as it pertains to attendance and getting our kiddos into school. That includes weekly check-ins with students. Laura and I are looking at that, those data reports, working with all the people involved, but also bringing the kids into the conversation also and making sure that they, that we're touching base with them and acknowledging them and telling them, you know, we're happy that they're there so that they are aware that we're, we're having those conversations. We also, something that we tried this year, and I'm sure you've seen some pictures on social media, is our attendance was somewhat concerning at half-days. So we, we were starting to try a few different things to see if it makes an impact on the data and half-day attendance. So most recently, Dr. Beeler was at Prospect for one of our half-day surprise assemblies. We don't give the kids all of the details or the staff, and the staff are actually worse than the kids because they want to know. But we, so we've been trying to be creative. It's academically based for the most part, and or some, it reaches some aspect of early childhood education and development. And we were going to start to monitor that to see if that has an impact on half-day attendance. Same thing with Junior Warrior Adventure. That was a program that, and we'll speak to the academic side of that in a minute, but that was another piece that we wanted to grow after-school programming. It is more exploratory enrichment-based programming, but we strategically wanted to put it on Mondays to see if that potentially makes an impact on Monday attendance as well. So trying to put some of those pieces in place and then connecting it to attendance and monitoring it. There's a lot of different factors involved, but just, you know, trying to experiment with some of these things to see if they make an impact on attendance. Another thing is we edited video announcements each morning where we're greeting the Prospect community, well, not community, but our community within the building, so students and staff, and welcoming them to school, thanking them for being there, and just acknowledging some of those pieces and bringing those into video announcements as, as well each day. Family engagement. So we have, and again, I'm sure you've seen some of these posts on social media. So family engagement was something that we wanted to grow and expand for this year. And so we've had some pre-existing events that are really working. We get a ton of really positive response from families in the community, and we really wanted to grow that as well. So those are some of our offerings that we've had this year. And we also, one thing we started to think about was expanding our events during the day and bringing families into the school setting and having those positive experiences with our young learners. So during the day, we also have tried to expand that to have more interdisciplinary connections. So bringing art into, into our, into our grade level opportunities for families, bringing PE in, so kind of expanding those opportunities to be cross-curricular as well. One thing that this has been kind of ongoing, and we keep trying to figure out the best time to bring families in. So I know that's tricky. Families are busy and they have a lot of things going on after the school day. So we've been trying to look at attendance and looking at our offerings that are at six o'clock as opposed to, and even the day of the week, we've been trying to look at that a little bit to see what is going to best meet the needs of the family because we want to create these events, but then we also want families to be able to come to the events. And then just one other thing we wanted to highlight is just monthly letters to families. We are trying to, and we're going to continue to grow, obviously, that, but thinking about our communication to families, celebrating what's going on within the school, integrating some of the academic pieces, so putting in something around math literacy and also some of those attendance pieces and then any other information we want to share with families.
Moving on to academics, we are having ongoing academic and collaborative conversations with grade levels. This year, we have a skills group starting in kindergarten. And what that looks like, we take a look at the entire cohort and we look at specific skill deficits within each class. And then we root them by that specific skill. So certain teachers are teaching, you know, for example, CVC words, consonant vowel consonant, how, how to, how to read those specific words. And those kids are going to that classroom and working on that specific skill. It's had a profound impact on our data, which we'll get to in, in just a minute, but we've partnered with Allegheny Limestone to kind of roll that initiative out. So we had the curriculum developer kind of come over and have a Zoom meeting with us to kind of show us, hey, this is what we're doing at Allegheny, and this is what, what, what you can do. And then our second meeting to kind of get that off the ground was to have the Allegheny Limestone kindergarten team meet with our team. And it was wonderful. We were able to ask really open questions and each kindergarten teacher kind of was able to be open in that, in that conversation. So we're starting that. We're, we're very excited about that. And it's, again, it's a pilot, just to kind of see what our teachers are liking, what does the progress monitoring look like, and how is it impacting our growth? Going to academics with our after-school program, we have something called Power Hour that takes place on Tuesday, Thursday. And that's for our students who are having, they just need a little bit of extra academic support, so they're staying after, for that. We also have, as Conventions, our Junior Warrior Academy. So we have outside help and, and teachers from inside our, our school coming to put on different clubs. So we've had the 4H Club, Science Club, Craft Club, Boy Scouts. And then you'll see in the upper left-hand corner, we have Archery, which has been just a fantastic opportunity for our kids to, like, what an opportunity. Next component to our academics that we'd like to highlight is the Coaching Self-Beef Challenge. So this was spoken about at a couple of, a couple of word meetings ago of that initiative and how we were going to put that forth in, in our school. And it's been, it's been really impactful. So we're very excited. Teachers are opting in to record themselves. And then, you know, really, we, by, by doing that, we, we really want them to have the initiative and autonomy over to analyze and make those self-directed teacher choices to then help with our student growth.
Okay, just a few other things we would like. Okay. A few other things we wanted to highlight is obviously we are always expanding and growing our professional development options. That's in response to what we're seeing in the classrooms, working with teachers, feedback from the coaches, and just responding to the needs within the building. So that's ongoing throughout the year. We also are trying to be very mindful of bringing NWA and just any assessments in particular back into the conversation with kids so that they're aware of the intentionality behind it, why we have some of these measures, and then celebrating our growth. So I think we have a picture. Yes. And they, you know, again, just bringing the academic piece back in and having those conversations with them and celebrating it as appropriately. So we did have a little, we brought a little treaty to our classrooms that demonstrated the most growth across all grade levels. And they, they always get really excited about that. But, you know, we, we continue to try to have those ongoing conversations with the kids. We are starting to, we've been planning with Nikki and Erin about, around a bunch of different things. But also, I know this came up at one of our previous meetings as well, is to have some of those opportunities for between buildings. We've set up some strong transition activities for the students, but now making sure that the staff are having those regular ongoing opportunities to talk between the grade levels. So not only those horizontal grade, or grade level conversations, but also vertically throughout the building and then across buildings. And then reading challenges, that was something that we are, yes, we are trying to implement and, and keep going with. We have a pretty good response, but we keep talking to the kids about that as well, is all these skills that we're working really hard on during the day and throughout the year, making sure that we continue those skills over the break. So we've implemented some reading challenges. We want to start thinking about some math challenges as well over the breaks for kids to continue to practice those skills. And then they can turn that in and either get like, we, we've done a surprise recess, we've done a little surprise bag and just talking to the kids about continuing to work on their skills outside of the school setting.
Moving into our MTSS process, we are extremely excited to put forth this effort here. We've, we've done a lot of work with Seneca to really align our practices. We had a chance to take a look at our, our data, our data schedule. So Seneca and Prospect are kind of aligned in that way. So we have ongoing MTSS parent meetings. Throughout the year, we have intervention processing meetings, which take place throughout the year as well. We have four times where, where we meet with our, our interventionists and really take a look at our, every single child, their specific skill, what intervention they are using, and if it's working. So kids during that, that time kind of switch groups, and we kind of just really take a look at the whole child in that way. Four times a year, we're hoping for more, maybe next year, where our grade level data meetings are happening. And that is occurring 10 weeks after implementation of intervention. And I kind of highlighted on the side there, just a snapshot of what that, of schedule of what that data meeting looks like. So we're really kind of, and I'm going to get to it, but we're kind of aligning those instructional strategies and curriculum alignment to MTSS. So in the morning, we, we had the interventionists come in with the teachers and admin and had discussions around specific students. And then for math, we did the same thing with our coach, Kelly Calarko, who really talked about different trends in our NWEA growth. So that's been really powerful. We have our referral process, so we have an MTSS Tier Two form. So if kids, if students, if teachers are in their classroom saying, hey, I'm really having trouble with this one child, they can fill out this, this form and that child's entered into the MTSS spreadsheet where we then meet with the liaisons, our interventionist, the teacher, the parent, and kind of look at the whole child, attendance, behavior, what are the specific skill deficits that you are seeing? And we use our, our benchmark assessments to really align that. We have our MTSS meetings every 10 weeks, and the people that are at that are, of course, the interventionists, teachers, liaisons, parents, and admin. And then we've started something new this year that Seneca kind of highlighted at the last presentation, which is our Power School Intervention tab. Thank you, Leva. And it's been wonderful, a wonderful use of really kind of bringing the, the data to life because our third graders who are, are receiving MTSS, they're in intervention, they're going to move to fourth grade. Our fourth grade interventionists may, may say, what kind of intervention was this child working on? What kind of skill deficit? And they don't have to start from scratch. It's all there. So that's been really great. And then, of course, I kind of went over a little bit of our grade level data meetings to just really talk about the instructional strategies, curriculum alignment. And this, this year, something new that we're, that we're doing is kind of talking about strategies that teachers are using in their, in their classrooms. And we've had some really powerful conversations and found some trends. Hey, I'm a third-grade teacher. I'm having the same thing. What are you doing? Just having those open conversations, which has been great. Moving into the next slide, we have some overall school NWEA data that we're very, very proud of. You'll see our, on the left side, the graph, it's first grade, second grade, and third grade. The purple color is going to show you the grade level that you see below. So the first grade right here in the purple, this is their RIT score from winter this year. And then this cohort was in kindergarten last year, and this was their, their score. So you can kind of see the year growth there. And we are so proud to see the growth every single, every single cohort. And then the blue is our national norm. We are extremely close every single time, nine points away, four points away, four points away. So really, really proud to showcase that. And then moving into, couldn't, of course, show our kindergarten year growth because they didn't take the test last year. So we wanted to kind of highlight what they're, what they're working on. I kind of circled what the scores were for fall and winter, and then we compare it to the national norm. So in the fall, our RIT score was 138. Winter was 147, so a wonderful growth there. And again, we're very close to the national norm. So something very exciting. And then the projected spring growth is 157. So we're excited to see what happens in the spring. Our data meeting schedules, let's just kind of take, yeah, just a snapshot of, of what our, of what our kids look like. So we didn't include it, but each child is here. And it kind of looks at not just one data point, but, but many. We want to look at the whole child, as I mentioned before. So all of their, their different scores, their progress monitoring, their intervention tool, that specific skill deficit. We really want to hold in on that next year to really talk about what is that specific deficit? What is the intervention that we're using? What is the progress monitoring? What is the, the, the tier? And then moving forward, what are we going to do?
Okay. And then just to kind of connect a few other pieces. So a lot of our conversation too, especially because they're just coming into this full setting, is taking into consideration all aspects of childhood development. So something you may not see in the, in the data reports and on those spreadsheets, but we do have it somewhere else is, and just, it's coming up in conversation. We're thinking about vision. We're thinking about hearing. Look at, following up with a nurse. Is there something medical involved? Making sure that we're keeping the parents involved. So if there's anything from the social history that we may need to be aware of, we're bringing that component into it. Attendance is a key piece and then SEL. So taking all of those pieces into consideration and having very collaborative, open conversations as we try to best support our students. And then just a few other things to highlight because we could keep going on and on. And I'm sure, yeah. So just a, a few other things that we continue to grow and expand as we're reflecting on our current practices and responding to the needs of the building and for families. So our screening practices is something that we continue to grow, the partnership with outside agencies, but also within the building. So we are now offering it. We did one late spring last year. This year, we're going to offer two different dates for screening, and we're also going to have a touch point in the middle of the summer. And then again, bring all that information together so that we're making informed decisions for our kiddos entering into Prospect in the fall. Transition to school opportunities, we continue to expand those, thinking about, these are very big, important moments for, for young kids, but also for families. So we want to provide those opportunities for that big transition in their lives so that families feel comfortable for, with that transition and also for our, for our very young learners. So we are going to start to kind of grow and bring back our kindergarten transit. And then also for pre-K, we kind of expanded that last year. And we're going to continue to expand that this year and just grow the partnership as well with outside agencies. Transitional kindergarten, that is a, a big consideration for next year. Having that program at Prospect. So we are in the, the early phases where we're starting to explore what other districts are doing for the transitional kindergarten program. And then potentially doing some site visits and think about what that could look like for our building and our kiddos at Prospect. And then there's been, I think Karen has been collaborating with the school nurses. There's been some movement with dental bands have kind of been around, but the mobile vision services, that's, I believe, kind of a newer service throughout the, the state. So we're trying to tap into that resource and potentially bring that to the school. So that's something that's going to be hopefully forthcoming. Dental fans are always so hard to get, get lined up, but we are optimistic that we will hopefully make some progress in getting a dental fan to the building in the near future.
Can you, what's the transitional kindergarten here?
Sure. So that would be kind of an in-between, between pre-K and kindergarten.
So we had one of those before and got rid of it. So. But I thought we got rid of it because we. Is there a new approach or?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, that's all. We did have one for a long time.
I can speak to that a little bit. Right. So Teresa, you are absolutely correct. Up until about five or six years ago, transitional kindergarten was sort of a consistent practice for us. And what we've recognized over the past two years is that many of our students, particularly the students who are sort of at the, the end of the cutoff for students entering into kindergarten that are potentially 10 months younger than some of the other students, that they could benefit from having what would essentially be a two-year kindergarten program. Because of the regulations for pre-K and when students can enter into kindergarten, they're sort of pigeonholed to enter into kindergarten at what is i- in some cases, a relatively young age. And post-pandemic, I guess we'll say, we've recognized that some of the students who are entering don't have some of the developmental skills and I hate to say socially, emotionally, but that factors into this as well, aren't necessarily prepared to be successful in kindergarten. And while they make progress at the end of one year, they could definitely benefit from having an additional time in kindergarten, learning the skills that are necessary to be successful once they enter into first grade. So we're going to revisit that particularly now, and we anticipate that this will really benefit a, a certain number of our students. Not all of them, not even, you know, a third of them. But most likely, one class worth of students will greatly benefit from that program.
Okay. Just curious.
Nope. Great question.
So in summary, culture is really the foundation of everything that, that we do. So Kim and I are very transparent in what we'd like our culture in science to be. We're optimistic. We have a growth mindset. And our school is really a staff that is grounded in trust. So we really want to have those open and honest conversations. A couple of the, of the pictures that we can kind of showcase to that is our circles on the, on the right-hand side, we have teachers kind of circling up. We have our Prospect brag book, which goes around our school for our staff to highlight one another. And then a couple of the games that, that we play is, they're kind of fun. Called, you know, do you have a pumpkin in your pocket? Do you have a snowflake in your pocket? And we have these little button-sized snowflakes, and it gets really competitive. So people ask, do you have a pumpkin in your pocket? And then if you do, you have to give it up. And then at the end of the day, we kind of see who our, who our winners are. It's just something silly to get people smiling and talking to one another. Before we do questions, if we go to the next slide, someone on, on the board mentioned that they have a special week this week, and so we have a little video. You want us to sing to you, Teresa? You want us?
For the kids.
I prefer the kids.
Our kiddos are singing Happy Birthday.
Thank you very much. You tell the kids I said thank you. I appreciate it. Because I do love my birthday.
So what questions can we have?
I like everything that you're doing. It sounds like you're really trying to reach out to the parents and get the parents involved. Get the staff involved. I like how we're really trying to monitor the data, and it doesn't seem like second and third grader is right there with the national numbers. That's kind of exciting. If we can get first up there, that will be, you know, but that's exciting. And it's exciting that we're making some good growth that was, that is. That's what it looks like to me. So it seems like you're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, just run down. I wanted, you touched on something back when you were talking about the academics. You were talking about horizontal and vertical conversations, transitions. Liberate on that a little bit, so we're all clear.
Yeah, absolutely. So for student staff, both?
Both.
Okay. So the transitions between the buildings. So we've really been thinking about third grade or setting them up to be successful. So that's been a big piece. I think part of our transition events for pre-K and kindergarten is really thinking about that big time in, in their career is transitioning into school and continuing to grow those, those opportunities. For third graders, we've expanded on things like having them go over to the high, or to the high school and, and swim. And some of that's based off of feedback from the kiddos and things that, you know, are, are big in their world that sometimes we forget about as, as professionals. And then they come over here for a day and kind of simulate a fourth grade experience. So we continue to kind of respond to some of the feedback that we're getting from them, also from the teachers, to try to make sure that we're setting them up to be successful. One thing that already was kind of a nice collaboration, but based off of the Seneca presentation, Kelly Calarko has been working with math coaches at Seneca, and I believe the high school, to think about, I think the feedback was around math skills for families to do homework. So they've been already starting to partner and thinking about not only just a math night, but thinking about how we, throughout the district, kind of support our families in, not just the, at one time a year for a math night, but periodically as these bigger skills are going to come up. So that especially is going to, we're trying to create that consistency between the buildings, but especially during those transition years, make sure there's, that can. Make sure there's that consistency, so I think that collaboration as well and being consistent between programming, I think will support with some of those things, I think, I know. Um but then also, so we've been talking about some half days as well with Seneca to try to create those opportunities. Um we, I think we were talking about for May, to have the third and fourth grade teachers start to collaborate and creating the time for them to get together. Um it is kind of difficult during the day, but I think, you know, we've expressed that we want to start to plan and make sure that they're getting together. It's a little bit easier for us to get the grade levels together and integrate it into like our NTSS process. And to create meetings during the day after school, but making sure that we're being mindful to have those conversations between the buildings. And create those opportunities and and save that time and space as well, because that's that's important, so.
And I will add, in June. We have Mickey and Erin coming over to our school, we're inviting third grade parents, third graders. Um to come into our gym, and we're gonna have Mickey and Erin kind of just introduce themselves.
Yeah, and that was something that we kind of expanded upon, third graders were a part of our end of the year assembly. Um and it got to the point where a lot of the information and thinking about those transition pieces was just specific to third grade, so. Continuing to partner with them and and grow those opportunities, so, thank you.
Collaboration between the two different school districts. And the reason why I'm glad is because specifically, how about your reading teachers, your interventionists, are they collaborating with the next building? How often do they meet with reading teachers specialists in the next building?
Yeah, they just had their, or is that coming up? They just had, right, yeah, um their reading department meeting, um so I think just starting to make sure that we're keeping a pulse on those pieces and. Securing that time and space for them to meet, um the scheduling, we kind of had to.
Just had it, so you mean the first one of the year?
Um I believe throughout the district.
I I know the answer, so I'm just waiting to hear, maybe the answer is.
So they they have met virtually, I guess there's definitely been some challenges about the meeting. We've been talking about, what's the best way to do this, how do we get everybody together in person? And we just, you know, knock down those barriers and found. Got our principals together and said, let's find the best time, because part of what was happening was that the schools are on different schedules. And meeting after school was cutting into someone else's dismissal and it was hard to get together and we just had to say, principals. Let's work with us here to find that one time that we can meet once a month without fail, and we have that time now, so.
Was Dr. Bealer gonna say something?
I was just gonna mention that Mr. John brought up a really good point about the vertical and horizontal alignment, and sometimes we use. Education lingo without really explaining what that means and. I was just gonna, you know, give the big picture there, when we talk about horizontal alignment, we're talking about ensuring that. What students are taught, so in other words, what they need to know and are able to do is consistent, let's say, across all second grade classrooms. Um and it's important for our second grade teachers, right, to recognize that while they have some autonomy in the classroom. All of the students need to leave second grade with what's sometimes called a guaranteed curriculum, meaning. Everybody has had access to and should have learned these particular skills, because they're going to need to build on those in third grade. So the horizontal piece is making sure that things are consistent across all of the grade levels. And then the vertical alignment is ensuring that the third grade teachers know what has been taught in second grade. And the second grade teachers know what the third grade teachers expect to happen. And sometimes there's some challenges there between buildings or say in the high school between departments. So having those meetings more frequently, particularly across grade levels. Is exceptionally helpful, and then there's another way to expand upon that, which is what you're hearing is happening with Allegheny Limestone. It's fine, and you know, like ten years ago, we had a pretty good idea of what was happening within our district, but. What we didn't necessarily recognize, particularly at the high school, is that our expectations for what students needed to know. Was off from what some of the other districts were and what the state expectations were, and that was causing us to have some difficulties with graduation rates. So that piece of having everyone understand where they fit in the big picture, both within the district. And within their building is really key to ensuring the students, you know, don't sort of fall behind with sort of gaps in the curriculum. Um or gaps in expectations from either grade level to grade level or building to building.
Thank you for that.
Does anyone else have any other questions, your parents?
I just wanted to comment on your, um, well, a couple of things, with the archery being one. That uh the after-school archery program that Christian, one day I went to go pick him up and actually had the opportunity. To observe him through the window and his own element being taught, and I was really impressed by. Um how how good he was doing, and I I didn't teach him any of that, so the fact that he was really hitting the target every time, I was really impressed by that. And uh yeah, just, you know, I'm sure that goes for all of our friends, so great job there.
Alright, so. Um obviously today's involved for doing instructional, what I should have done was put Teresa's work down there, but you should have, and I couldn't have pretended that he was never here. Anyway, yeah, really. Just like before, uh we ended up with fifteen um that have indicated they're retiring as of either already this year. Um there's two that have already um left us this year or uh will be as of June thirty. So still unknown state uh budget figures, SSO on negotiations and confidential managerial. And well as the entire budget is still being reviewed, Mark and I are gonna sit down again on Monday. Uh we talked a little bit while we were in DC. Uh but different things, he's also gonna be meeting with the principals and reviewing their stuff as well. Um if you haven't read that. The personnel stuff, you'll see that I'm gonna be gone for a little while, so Mark's gonna pick up some of this for me. Uh so here we are, instructional. These numbers look big. There's a whole bunch of reasons why, one, we've added. I don't know how many different staff members um over the course of the year. A lot of times when we budget for a new position, we'll budget it at between fifty-five and sixty thousand dollars. Lately, we've been hiring seasoned professionals, so they're coming in at much higher salaries than we originally budgeted. So that's a reason why you'll see some other increases that are like, you know, what is going on here? Um that and these figures in here, um as I indicated before, are still being reviewed. But what's in here is if everything was maxed out, if every person gets paid out the um. Yeah, three thousand dollars for APO. If every person got paid out for the attendance awards every single month, this is like the max right now. So I'm gonna go through this again and then reduce those down to actual, because not everybody gets those every single time. But this is just like the max that it would be. Um as I indicated, there's a bunch of positions added, there are salary increases added, there are. The maxed out and, oh, special education between um. Special ed increasing almost twenty-five percent, special education costs for BOSI's are off the charts. We went up in one month um in this current festival year by over four hundred thousand dollars. And we never know, there could be a kid that comes in tomorrow, that's gonna cost us a quarter of a million dollars by going to St. Mary's School for that. We don't know, so we never know what's gonna happen, to be quite honest. There's not a lot built in there for those couple of kids to come in that could cost us a lot. So we gotta, you know, sort of rob Peter to pay Paul in order to get those costs paid. So special ed has increased a lot, special schools has increased a lot, because we're doing a lot more in the summers. So in the summer, um Kristen Lloyd had summer school for the high school kids. The Prospect and Seneca um schools both have different camps going on, they've got all these different programs that are happening. And they, Prospect and Seneca, there's two, three-week sessions of um students coming in, high school are six-week sessions. Uh for those, plus there's um athletic camps and a bunch of different stuff happening. The costs in order to get people to do that have gone up. So it's a lot more expensive across the board, some things are down because of different grants. We've also had to add people back into the budget, because our our and all the COVID funding is gone. Or will be gone on um September thirtieth, so that for, therefore, there's an increase in here as well. Oh, recreation down at the bottom, it's an increase in seventy-five thousand, but part of that is for um additional playground equipment at Prospect. And part of it is for rebranding of the gymnasium. Athletics is athletics, and that's always ongoing upwards. Um co-curricular is all the um. Advisors, et cetera, all the different class advisors and so forth, that includes um ski club, that includes. OM as well, family support liaisons, that's all ten of them, social workers, that includes an additional one. And it's an increase because there was a different grant that we found for one of them. Um psychologists, I don't remember why that one. Off the top of my head, um nurses, there was an additional nurse put on, there's also a request for another nurse. In their guidance, they're like the one that remained almost flat, which is great, somebody did. Attendance, uh that's actually gonna go up more, because what's not in there is an additional attendance that concerns specifically for Prospect. Um technology is technology and that's, it costs a lot to repair, to repair and replace. Uh laptops every year, uh library services went down a little bit, obviously, special schools went way up. OCCTE, that's a three-year rolling average. So if we were to do that based on actuals, one year it might be two hundred thousand, because we have a few kids going to BOCCTE. Other years, it might be a million, because we have a ton of kids going to CTE, so they balance it out by doing a three-year rolling average for that. Um special ed, as I indicated, those costs are off the charts. We also added a completely new special ed class here, a six-one-one camp, six-one-one class, so that's got a teacher. Three aides and an assistant, so that one classroom has five staff members. And it needs the needs of the students, so that's a a a large cost of the special ed cost. Uh teaching across the board, there's a couple of different um positions that are being requested. In-service is professional development, and we continue to grow that throughout um the years and across the district. Supervisory is all the principals assistants or clerical and all those votes involved. Curriculum is Beal's office, when uh some professional developers don't do that as well, so. So all of that, like I said, everything being maxed out, we're looking at fifteen point six percent, it's not gonna be that high, because we gotta go through all the.
Karen, I had a question, you touched on it, but you then you blamed straight over it, the social worker psychologist. That looks to me like we're losing positions in that, are we?
No, there's super grand funding in there, but it wasn't last year.
Oh, grant funding is picking it up, we didn't lose positions?
Uh this is a different way to look at the exact same thing, so instead of doing it by department, so to speak, this does it by. Type of expense, so salary fifteen point eight percent increase across the board for everybody. Um because of the additional positions, because people coming in at higher rates than were originally budgeted. Materials and supplies, it's almost flat, um equipment. There's a whole different variety of equipment from one year to the next. Contractual is a lot, and then BOC's, as you can see, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar increase. So overall, it's a different way of looking at the instructional costs based on the type of expense versus with each individual. And again, we're still reviewing. In a nutshell, that's it. I don't have any vertical or horizontal alignment.
Well, speaking of vertical, so you have known, five figures, is that for regular state aid and Native American?
In in a nutshell, yes, um the Native American aid, I've actually got some questions out to them, because. I think they're, the Native American tuition is being calculated differently than it has in the past, so I'm trying to figure out. Are they now following the rules and they weren't before? Or were they following them and they changed them, that's what I'm trying to figure out, and the unit coordinator has been off. Um so I think she's supposed to come back Thursday of this week, so I don't have any answers on that, but that I'm investigating. State aid, yes, we hopefully will have a budget on April first, but.
Karen, can I just ask one quick question? I know that we don't know what our income is that's coming in, but just to alleviate some questions, which some of our. Teachers and other staff members might be having, especially as we're seeing in the news. Districts all over Western New York are announcing um staff layoffs, one just yesterday laid off twelve staff members. Has that been a topic of conversation for us at all?
Absolutely not. Um one, I knew it was coming, two. Most, I shouldn't say most, but a lot of districts across New York State got decreases in their foundation aid. Welcome to Salomego, we got an increase to two million. Um and also our impact aid can fill up any of the short calls that we have um in state aid, as well as any of. The increases, because we have new positions, et cetera, uh so we have impact day that can basically fill the bucket for us to make sure that we. Continue operating programs as we have.
Thank you, and thanks for the great job that you do, because you mentioned something that you saw that coming. And I know you made adjustments all, you know, for the past several years to ensure that we were able to operate at the least the levels that we have been, so. Um I know that there's gonna be some anxiety amongst educators all over the state, particularly in Western New York. As information comes out from other districts, but it's good to know that for everyone to hear that we have not had those conversations at all.
Well, they'll probably be excited to see that we have some retirees and uh.
Yeah, so that, yeah, I'll be hiring. Yeah, so the options for us will be much better than, hey, can you breathe?
Uh the other thing too, I think that's important is that, you know, Karen's done a great job with um. With our fund balance and creating the different reserve accounts, so that we have our capital reserves, our technology reserves and. That we do sock away money um to make sure that our programs that we're building can continue. Um and she's really done a great job with that, and um it's when you when your budget goes from twenty-three to. So uh managing that, making sure that everybody has what what they need, you know, um. Our boys are going to States, right, and um we're fortunate enough to make sure that we're sending them on our. Our good, our our boys and our girls on our good buses and we have hotel rooms and. Um you know, so we do all that for bound, you know, to make sure that there's money there, and that's just one thing. But we try to make sure that people can go for professional development to different conferences, we try to make sure that the students can go on different field trips and that. We can utilize as as much as possible, like you mentioned the archery. Or our ski clubs, you know, we're always trying to see like what can we do to make the kids interested and to keep them here and. Karen does a great job with finding the funding and keeping our funding going and. I just can't thank her enough for making sure that our district is as sound as what we are, because. I remember the birthdays when it was, and we were laying up and we were lucky to be in the position where we're not, so.
Okay. Next, we will move on to communications, we have. And we got Title Six, you said Aaron's on, well, there he is.
Scanal, everyone, how's it going, sorry I couldn't be there with you today. Um but, you know, nothing, I've been given a lot of updates, nothing really pressing for Title Six um today. Um we got our Indigenous Parent Committee meeting tomorrow night at six, right in the LGI there, um as well as. Um as well as be sure to follow the social media, Salamica IPC, um social media Facebook page, keep updated with us and um. Yeah, nothing really pressing tonight, guys, so quick and easy.
We'll move on to Central Office Conference, Karen, again. Uh yeah, just one thing quick. Um well, Mark and I ran um VC, we, you know. The federal government is on a, what they call a CR, continuing resolution, so they don't have a budget either. Um so where we are with our impact aid right now is we are at fifty percent of what we will end up receiving. But until the government actually has a budget or continues to pass another CR. Uh we're kind of on hold as far as what's coming in, but it'll be coming in. There are so many school districts that if they don't have impact aid, they're closing the doors. Right. Um and it's part of the defense budget, so um. I think we'll be okay, but also what I think is fantastic is one that I was talking to the executive director of NAFIS. And she indicated that she had a conversation with one of the state um representatives down there, Jeffries. And I think they're from Ireland, okay, they're from Ireland. And they were talking about impact aid and the uh. I'm not sure if it's Senator or um in the House, but they were, oh, we have a meeting with the school next week. It's Salamica and the girls says, yeah, that's impact aid. And like they, they weren't putting the two and two together, which, which, you know, that was like really cool. And that person is so looking forward to our kids coming down there, so it's like perfect timing. Uh they'll be back in, in session and to have our kids go down and, and tell our story and hear it from the students. Um they also recommended that they hear the story from the Board of Ed because you can go in and say, I was elected to represent. My people, my, you know, my constituents, my, my students, my families, et cetera, and so are they. So that says a lot to them. So if any of you um ever have that urge to go down. Uh to the Hill uh during NAFIS sessions, uh one is in September and the other one's in March. So I would highly recommend that you do that and take some time to meet with our representatives, et cetera, because um. It's just really something that would really help the program, not only for us, but you know, the other, there were twelve hundred and seventy, I think. Applicants for uh the portion of impact aid that we apply for, the general aid. Um so there's a lot of us out there. That's my two cents.
It is down for September, Karen. Just expand that for budget.
Yeah, I just uh wanna welcome all our students. We can see everyone here. Um that's part of what we love the best when you guys make the time to come. Um I want to congratulate our boys basketball team and the coaches. Um final four again, it almost feels surreal, this is happening again. Very exciting game Saturday, the crowd was wonderful. So here we go again, that's really exciting, we'll give a good birthday present today. Just tell them what um Mr. John was, this is John and I worked together to bring our reading and literacy interventionist department all together in one place. To have a great collaborative session, we have to talk about what's going on in each building. And um we talked together about our roles and our goals, what we see in each building respectively, what we want to improve. Uh what came out of that meeting is we realized that we are a um a powerful group. Powerful professional team that when um they all meet in their own building, just so you know, they meet in their own buildings regularly. This was a good opportunity for us to um bring everybody together and um. Reintroduce ourselves and, and it was, it was such a good energy in the room that day. Um that we can't wait to do that again next month because we actually started putting together something that we want to move forward with. Um and what things looking, looking for as to how they can help. Um as interventionists with a voice because they're helping students to uh get to where they need to be. Um great luck. So um a lot of times what we do as teachers. We do, we do our job and now what we're talking about now is how do we connect to those classrooms? How do we um bring those conversations together? Cause they're willing to tell us about how their children are doing. And I just heard some amazing stories and questions. There were a lot of questions and I found that to be the most. Um powerful part because you, you do have a voice interventionist, you are helping us to move our children to proficiency. So tell us what you're seeing. So it was a very powerful meeting. Um we um met with our newly formed restorative practice core team and our principals, they actually met today. Uh to continue with implementation as well as talking about sustaining our future with restorative practices to support our children. Um also met with our wonderful summer school and ski camp staff to begin planning. And uh we talked about these um motivating and um. Programming fun innovation. Uh we also, actually also talked at individual buildings how there's all these fun things for them to do. But we're actually parsing out times for there to be academic continuation, like what did they not master during the year? And we want them to have fun, but there's also going to be times um carved out for. Children who still need an extension of time to learn skills that were internalized, internalized during the year to continue in summer. So uh we're pretty excited about uh all the stuff that's gonna happen in ski camp and.
Okay, so anyone have any questions for Dr. Ban Kelly? And we'll move on to the board message. Christian, I might start with you.
Yeah, sounds good. Um first off, thank you to our presenters and speakers tonight. All the work you guys do um each day for the betterment of our students and staff. Um I thought you guys' presentations tonight were great and super informative. I got a lot of notes into the things I've learned, different new insights, data, things like that. So I know a lot goes into the, partly that, but also just behind the scenes, all the work I go through. And that's just, you know, it goes for everybody here. Um good luck to the boys varsity basketball team, obviously got their rundown, safe travels, getting out there, getting home. Um we know you're gonna win, but even if whatever happens, I'm, I'm proud of you guys, proud to be a warrior and uh, yeah. And lastly, it was nice to learn about horizontal and vertical transition and collaborations.
Um welcome to the students that are here tonight. Um thank you to all of the vendors. Good luck to the boys basketball teams. Open for a win and safe travels for everybody. I know that there, there'll be a lot of spectators going out there too.
Just give my voice back, so I'll make it quick to the, thanks for the, thanks for the presentations, always appreciate it. Um everybody that came out tonight, it's uh one of those nice spring days, thanks for spending a little time here, whether you uh did it voluntarily or required. Um it's uh, it's good to see everybody. And just a shout out to uh boys basketball team. Uh good luck and safe travel.
I'm gonna say thank you to the presenters and it's encouraging seeing us getting close to that national.
Yeah, uh also thanks for the presentation tonight, uh been um very informative. Um I've had a, had a battling back a nasty head cold and just like Ted, you know, uh some of the throat. You know, stuff too, so um I just wanna say two words, go Warriors.
Yeah, thanks for telling me you were sick. No, as always, thank you to all you stand here, uh everybody in the district who's helping our kids and helping move education here, making our kids smarter, trying to. Accomplish one of our values. Thank you to you all. Uh I mean it, every, every, every week, every day, please see what you guys do. We're appreciative. So thank you all. Um other than that, just enjoying a nice spring day and glad to see the students here. I saw a few of you just a little while ago, glad to see you made it over.
Okay, uh I'd also like to thank the presenters, it's good to hear what's going on uh in the building. Of course, it's always good to get a project update. Again, thank you for the birthday song because I really do appreciate it because I really do love my birthday. Um and I'm not afraid to say it. I don't like getting older, but you know, I'm older and bolder, I guess is where I'm at. Uh again, kids, you see something that you wanna change or you have ideas on how to make this better for students or staff or. Anybody sitting here, community members, don't be afraid to shout out, let us know because we wanna always try to improve and if there's things that aren't. But you know, we, we will know we can't change it. So again, thank you for everybody being here tonight. And I will be going to a Warrior game on Thursday, very excited and. I'm hoping that I do get a good birthday present with a state win, but if we don't, at least we're in the final four and it's uh. Pretty exciting being there and being a part of it and the community that goes there and supports. Again, thank you to everybody that does come out and support our teams. And our, our athletics and our theater and music, it's just. One thing about Salamica is the community does back the students and they're always there to support them no matter what and. If we were fortunate enough to be at the game on Saturday, the energy that was there was really exciting and um. It was a closer game than what we wanted, but you know, my heart got pumping and I felt like it was a little bit of exercise. From jumping up and down and you know, swatting and everything else that was exciting. So uh I look forward to seeing a lot of people there. I know that we do have spectator bus going up. Uh which will be exciting for the students, it might be a long trip, but um you know, for those of you that wanna participate and go up and. Walk with a parent or guardian to stay overnight and know that we are trying to make sure that you're there and you're gonna be there, so. Uh with that, uh go Warriors. Um I'll turn it over to Dr. Wheeler, who is remote.
Uh yes, just a couple of things. Um of course, happy birthday week to uh Mrs. Ray. And um you know, there's, I, I always mention that there are many things to be proud of uh working for Salamica. And yes, our basketball team is doing great. It's wonderful to see them on the court as well as our cheerleaders. Um but the support for them is incredible and we just saw that. Um our student section uh has received an award as well. And a lot of that really doesn't just go to the incredible student support and spirit that we see every day, but a lot of that goes to the coordination. Uh of one guy sort of behind the scenes and I just wanted to acknowledge that Levi does such a good job. Of making sure that all of our sports, our academics and all students really get recognized um and. That they come together and I've been working with him today on ensuring that we have. Uh signup lists and everything's all set for the spectator bus and I don't know other districts in Western New York that would, you know, get a. Spectator bus together with fifty-plus students and members to go off six hours across the state to support their team in it. That's really something that's great. Um one other thing that is terrific, as Karen mentioned, we were in Washington DC for the NAFIS conference. Uh last week I had an opportunity to meet with our uh student activist group, which is going to be going next week. To do actual lobbying. Um I'm very pleased that we have a record number of students. We have fifteen students that are going. And meeting with at least eight, that number has probably gone up since I talked with them. Um senators and congressmen to lobby for increases and just simply educate on the importance of. Impact aid. And when I met with them, they were very focused. Their questions were right on point. I know today they were just asking for specific data so that when they go in, they can actually have numbers uh to discuss. So that is another, not just a point of pride, but it's really just something that is critically important, not only for our district. But for our students to understand and not simply understand, but actively be engaged in the real practice. Of advocacy and lobbying for interests and needs that truly support them. Uh and the next generations of students behind them. So thank you very much.
Anyone have any questions for our? All right then, you're gonna move on to our consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Carrie, second by Dale, are there any questions?
Yeah, I just had one. Um on the list of coaches on there, obviously we've seen multiple coaches on the sidelines. Is there an explanation for that? Specifically, you list Adam Bennett, Gregory Eric and fourteen students, but we know we see more coaches on the sideline than that, what's. Do we follow after we approve the other coaches' goals or?
Um should we add in coaching staff?
Greg and Adam were like the official, the other ones were volunteers that were gonna approved at the beginning of the year, the season. So like um Jeff Anastasia and. Fish. Andy, like this kind of. Well, he's already a JV coach, so he's.
But is he, but are they good?
But do we have to approve their travel?
They're, they're not listed in the travel. The only two coaches listed in the travel is Adam and.
How about, how about I add in coaches and coaching staff? It's probably best.
Are you guys okay?
Probably the same under the two measures.
I'll just stand up before you. Okay, then we got a motion by Carrie, second by Dale, all in favor. Opposed, staying motion Carrie, thank you Carrie. Uh we have no old business, under new business, uh we have our parent county board of elections only place agreement. Uh which will be at Prospect's uh elementary school for the primary election on Tuesday, uh April second. We also have. A local primary on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, and then of course the general election on Tuesday, November fifth. So we need a motion to um approve the polling place. Tracy. Second by Ted, are there any questions?
Yeah, just on the, we're not occupying the building, right? So April second, I know we're on break, June twenty-fifth, there's nobody. In school, we're not in session, right, June twenty-fifth?
Any other questions? Got a motion by Tracy, second by Ted, all in favor. Opposed, abstaining, motion Carrie. And next we have our Sharon Ross Memorial Scholarship uh for two graduating seniors who will receive four hundred and forty-four dollars each. Um for the forty-four in the foundation, uh they will select those students. And if anybody is numbering line, Aaron, you can wear number forty-four. So we need a motion to approve the scholarship. Motion, motion by Carrie, second of that. Second by Brad, are there any questions? All in favor. Abstaining, motion Carrie. Item C, we are abolishing uh an electronic. And we are creating a technology compliant network specialist. So we need the emotion to approve the abolishment. Creation of the position. Motion by Dale. Second by Ted, are there any questions? All in favor. Opposed, abstaining, motion Carrie. Item E is our surplus, we have our two post weight machine. And uh DVD players, so we need a motion to declare those items surplus. Motion by Christian, second by Dale, are there any questions? All in favor. Opposed, abstaining, motion Carrie. Item E is our project transfers, uh will be attachment that is provided, so we need a motion to approve the budget transfers. Motion by Brad, second by Carrie, are there any questions? And then just regular cover.
Uh this one is, um when Marcy did her budget, she put um all the purchases and equipment, but we're actually going to Bozies.
So we have a motion by Brad, second by Carrie, all in favor. Opposed, abstaining, motion Carrie. Item A is our personnel. And then B, we need to approve all the items. Motion by Ted, second, second by Tracy, are there any questions? All in favor. All in favor?
Right.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Uh, we have no new staff.
Service helper.
Okay, that is. It's going to, Mark, do you wanna introduce Beth, simply our food service?
I would be happy to, um, or actually Karen, do you? I wanna step on your toes there as the food service queen.
Food service, I have a new title then?
Yeah.
Is your stipend that goes with that? So Beth is joining our um our team of um Warriors that work in the uh service. Lines to serve make food and serve food to all of our students every day, um, and I can't even see. So that, welcome aboard and um we'll see you in line.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, welcome, thanks for.
No one else, we're good, thank you. All right, and our board information report, we have our enrollment report as of March first, our first reading of policy sixteen forty absentee ballot. And then our upcoming events, um, the thirteenth is our Indigenous Education Union Meeting at four thirty here, um. Jenna left off my birthday, which is my good age. The nineteenth is our finance meeting, twenty-five, and then uh our next board of education meeting is here on twenty-sixth. And with that, uh, we need a motion to going to executive session for the purpose of property acquisition.
Motion.
Motion by Christian.
Okay.
Second by Dale. All in favor?
Right.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried, uh, we may act on business coming out. Uh, I thought for the students, bringing forms down, shaking them aside, so you don't have to worry. About.
All right, thank you, folks, of this one.
Yeah.
It's been a little bit out of this one.
Did Jenna, she went. Okay.